There it is.
There you go.
Okay, minutes of the past meetings, February fifteenth and March eighth.
The only thing on the March eighth one, it doesn't list Dan as being here, but then he makes a motion to second this stuff, so.
Motion's added here, so.
You know, I read the minutes and I didn't notice that.
I can do that, Dan.
So could we have a motion to accept the minutes of February fifteenth first?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Can we make a motion to the, of minutes of?
It's like voluntary.
Second. All in favor? Aye, very good. Mayor, do you have anything beyond what's on the agenda?
I do not.
Is there any public here? No. Okay. Police Department wanting ammunition, and I want to know what criminals they're shooting at.
Oh. It's, uh, it's in an effort not to have to, and if we do, God forbid, qualified and trained and not liable for lack of training because of lack of ammunition. So to that end, we did not have enough ammunition to carry us through our last qualification from last year, which put us in a shortfall this year, which then I've got one officer in the academy and another one about to start the academy, and they qualify in the academy as well. And our qualification is coming up for this June, and I, we're going, by state mandate, we're supposed to qualify twice a year. I don't have enough ammunition to qualify one time this year, never mind two.
Is there a budget normally for ammunition, or is this something you put in when you need it?
No, the budget, there is a budget for this, and it's within my Public Safety Supplies, and that, in that line item includes ammunition.
But you didn't have enough dollars in there, because you didn't anticipate this shortfall?
Um, I can't speak for.
This is Bruce.
The previous budget, but the amount that, the amount that was in the Public Safety Supply wouldn't even cover the eleven thousand dollars of six twenty-eight that we need for ammunition.
Okay. No, the only reason for asking is if this is something that you want to wait for, Karen, until he needs it, or do you anticipate ammunition in the budget all the time?
Yeah, no, we're already on it for our next budget.
Right.
Uh, chief.
Yep.
And if he doesn't get it now, then you can't qualify, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
He needs it now, but for next year, it'll be in the budget.
So you do this annually, the qualification?
Yes.
Yes, and we're supposed to do it twice a year, so what we do is, we make a makeshift secondary qualification on like either a low light, smaller window, less ammunition training, as opposed to our one day full-blown training where we use a lot of ammunition, both pistol and rifling ammunition.
So what did we do last year? If there was, if we didn't have the money in the budget this year, did we not do it?
We, no, we did. We didn't do, we didn't do this, what we didn't do is, we didn't do the secondary qualification, and we had just enough ammunition for our last June, so we kind of robbed Peter to pay Paul going a year back.
Okay.
In, in an effort not to do that, we'll do this, we're requesting this transfer for this year, being FY seventeen, as we move into FY eighteen, we're in the middle of a budget right now, and that.
Pre-allocating.
Right.
Yeah. If, if he doesn't do it now, then you wouldn't be able to qualify until after July, right?
Right.
And then that kind of misses his, then he misses his cycle.
Okay.
And what happens there is, we qualify in June annually, so if, God forbid, if we didn't have the appropriation and something happened and we missed our qualification, we extended the past year qualification, and God forbid, we did the transfer in July, didn't qualify until August, or September, say, and something happened, and within those three months, we would be outside of our department qualification, annual qualification time period.
And is there a penalty, or?
Well, could, if something happened during that time period, it could, it could be a real civil problem.
Okay.
Civil, civil liability.
Gotcha, okay.
Uh, you said secondary. Secondaries aren't necessary, but you want to do them for training purposes?
Secondary qualification?
Yeah.
No, no, they're mandated, but what we do is, we scale back the, the qualification, so it's not a full-blown qualification that we're going to do in June. We scale it back to either a four-hour block with low light conditions, where we don't do a lot of firing, but a lot more mechanics and movement and usage of light, and not use a lot of ammunition.
Choose the full one, not the light one.
I'm sorry.
Choose the first.
June, I'm sorry, yeah, yeah, June is the annual.
When's the typical second?
We, we try to do that right around September and fall, because then it gets darker earlier, and we get a little less to do the low light and stuff.
Okay. So this will catch you up, so that we won't see this appropriation necessarily next year.
Precisely.
Because you're going to be caught up from past years.
Exactly.
Okay. I have no more questions, councilors? Make a motion?
Motion to appropriate eleven thousand six hundred and twenty-eight dollars from the reserve fund to the police public safety supplies to provide funds for the purchase of firearms and ammunition.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. I've already put this on the docket for April fifth, I think it's the fifth, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so if you want to come.
Sure.
Explain why you're shooting your weapons.
The other important piece of this is they're holding twenty fifteen prices for us.
I saw that, that's our.
So that's very helpful.
Do we know what twenty seventeen prices would be?
Lot more.
You gotta hold that price.
They're not going down, man.
Hold that twenty fifteen price for like twenty years?
If he moves it for twenty years, that's very true.
All right. Thank you, Bob. Which one is first? Fifty thousand for purchase of water meters? Is this the finish? My question goes, is this the finish, the water meter?
No.
No. Replace it or not?
Replace it. At this time, I'm to ask the officer. Explain this.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you.
Well, never finish. Basically, it's an operating cost. I mean, every.
I thought at one point we were replacing older water meters with.
We got.
Street red meters.
We got.
We, that's a radio read, and that's just on, but right now, we're about a fifth of the way through. Fifty seven hundred, we've got less than a thousand, about a thousand that don't have a radio read on it.
I'm sorry, which, what are we talking about? Is fifty one five or?
No, fifty thousand for the meters.
Fifty thousand for water meters, that's the next one on the agenda? My apologies.
All right.
And so what you're saying is, you're putting radio reads out there.
Yeah.
But are you also replacing some older radio reads?
Some of them.
So this is for both?
It's, but it's also for the meters themselves, so as.
Did you have to have a meter inside and a radio meter outside?
Right. All the re, radio does is it picks up what the inside one says, so the actual meter. So those range in price from a hundred dollars to three thousand, depending on what size the meter is. So it depends on where we're, what we're replacing.
So is, you said it's like a ongoing event?
It'll always be ongoing.
So there was a project that changed all the old ones out, is?
It's never been done.
Or they still have a thousand left?
Wait, we, we haven't finished that.
Patty, you said a thousand of the ones that aren't radio reads?
Radio reads, yep. Out of five thousand seven hundred sixty-seven, we've got one thousand seventy that are still not radioed. So we'll go through a spurt, where we'll try to just get the radios on, but then every once in a while, well, that one doesn't even need just a radio, that one also needs a new meter, so then that slows down that process.
When did you start the radio, the radio?
About ten years ago.
More than that, at least ten plus.
I remember this.
Yeah.
So when you're going, this money is going to replace meters that you need to replace. The homeowner is not responsible for the meter inside?
No.
So you're replacing some older meters, as well as replacing some with radios?
Correct.
So it's both? So you'll have an ongoing need to do this every year anyway?
That's correct.
That's all that makes our money. That's what we run off.
Is, is this also for new construction, new homes?
Yes.
And how much will fifty thousand get you? How many?
Depends, as I said, a regular, one will cost, as I said, a small meter will cost a hundred and four. The radio itself will cost a hundred and fifty, and then if you need a large size meter, some of those cost over three thousand dollars.
Are those like for bigger homes, or?
Industrial?
Not, not a home.
Okay, like a business?
Some industrial stuff.
So, so I think if, I think if you looked at a home, a new home, that meter with the radio read is over two hundred dollars, like two hundred twenty bucks.
And we still, we still pay, we still?
Over a certain size, the businesses pay, but a lot of times, we'll end up paying because it looks like it's going to be to our advantage for one meter or another.
So it's, if you have to replace the radio and the meter, it's two hundred and thirteen?
Yep. Yep. For, for a household, for, for a house, if you get into a bigger, bigger business, that's going to go up.
So the average is what, three hundred dollars or something?
Probably more than that, maybe five hundred.
So this isn't going to these two thirty-five, that's just an idea?
That's an estimate of if you, what you, if.
What it could, that's all you need.
Right, if you just use these.
Probably needs some bigger ones, too.
If you just use the residential number, that's, that's what it costs.
You can get two hundred and thirty-five meters for fifty thousand dollars.
Right, then we go on spurts where right now, we're just trying to get a lot of the radios done, so we'll be sending out letters to people in the old areas, and the guys will go out and try to just change out the radios, change out the radios, but then they'll get there and they'll say, ah, that meter's really shot, we need to pull it.
That's smart.
Is, is having the radio, is having the radio make your job much easier?
It makes the radio go through, it automatically comes in, drops into our gun, and drops into our billings and stuff.
And it's, you don't break the privacy.
Right.
You're not going into a home, right?
No, they just drive through the area. We're down to, it used to take a whole month for them to read, and I think he's done in less than a week.
Wow.
Well, I remember before too, where it was high tech, that they just came to the outside of your house, and, I mean, at one time, people had to go in, or you'd call it in or whatever, but then that they had the big high tech, was when they came and put the.
The probes. There's still probes on people's.
The probes.
Yeah.
And now, he just drives.
Wow.
So that five thousand seven hundred sixty-seven, that's all houses and businesses and everything?
That's everything, all meters.
Well, okay, since this is our big revenue maker for the water department, I think we should do this.
You don't, we'll be in big trouble.
It's like not funding the tax collector, okay? No taxes.
Now, you can use the term no brainer.
He's a liar, Joe, by the way. I just want to say, every time you're here, it's, oh, this is a no-brainer.
But just, so, just for the record, he saved his fast pass card. The, the public hearing that you put on there, Dan, was not at the director's request, so he saved his card.
I didn't play that card.
Yeah, he's, he's holding that card.
What are you talking about? No, fast track, fast track the appropriations through.
Let me say something. There's absolutely no reason why we should hold things in finance if we don't have to.
Don't have to, I don't.
If there were questions, here's my thinking, we'll continue the public hearing. I'll just say, we still have to do more research and ask the council to continue the public hearing, but I don't feel like, it already takes a month to get, well, first of all, even longer, because you have to go to the mayor first, she has to put it in, then it has to go to finance.
That's the fast part.
So.
Why? Because you're. That's the speed trap.
Joe could get whatever he needs from you, isn't he?
No, that, that happens instantaneously, correct?
But anyway, it takes a month, so why should it take two months when it doesn't have to?
But I also need to, this is a time to bring it up, Joe, I know you have a conflict, you're out of town.
Yes.
The, they have a public hearing, because we were just looking at that.
Did Patty come?
Unfortunately not.
No.
Well, you can explain it.
Oh, I bet if I was going to be around.
I was just going to say.
Besides, it's a no-brainer.
It's a no-brainer.
But if, if, if there is questions, like you say, just hold opponent for the next question.
Well, if people have questions, I'll say, look, this is because we have to replace meters in order to earn money.
I think we could explain this relatively.
Well, I don't think it's.
Yeah, it really is.
Well, this is my appropriation request, I think I can handle it, and if there's any questions that, you know, people, you might want to, like, think of any questions you have before that.
Serial number of.
Joe is, you know, Joe is here.
I still have.
They may have trouble with the next one.
I was going to say, I still have one more request, so if there's a problem on the one, on the next request, then just both go voting on it until I'm there the next one.
Right, you, whatever you're comfortable with.
Well, you know what I'll do, in front of the council, I'll say, both administrators can't be here this evening, the mayor's going to explain these, and I'll explain them, the finance committees approve them, but if you would like to delay this, because you'd like to speak to them, wait a month.
I, I wouldn't think if you'd like to speak to them, I think if you'd like.
Have you had questions?
I have any questions that can't be asked, and, and honestly, that's what this meeting is for, so.
Well, public hearings are public hearings.
Public hearings are public hearings, but if you have any questions, too.
They were.
I mean, I don't know, you know.
Aren't the public hearings?
I, I think these are pretty straightforward.
I set them right away unless.
Where the police ones?
All, they're all set for this. Okay. Well, you know.
But if there were some specific questions that couldn't be asked, then.
When I get these appropriations, I'll ask you guys directly, can you be at this? Should I wait on?
In ninety-nine percent of times?
This is the only, the only.
I'm not worried about them, but I just thought.
And I got to be honest, half the time, we're there and we think, you know, you don't, like, not even.
Well, because as Pegg would say, they're no brainers.
Right.
What you think is a no-brainer.
Yeah.
Suddenly.
All right, so we have a motion for the no-brainer appropriation.
Saying a motion to approve the request of fifty thousand dollars to appropriate from the price between earnings to capital Y, FY seventeen, replacement of water meters.
Oh, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now he wants a new truck, he's very, you know, demanding.
But I have pictures.
Oh, I love the pictures.
The truck's always come with pictures.
Love the pictures.
Pictures are great.
Always, oh, please.
This is a two thousand and one van, used by the steward. This is the van here, and if you look at it, you'd say, geez, it doesn't look too bad.
I was, I was going to say. I might have not said geez, but I probably would have said.
Okay, so I was assuming there was going to be a more of a.
This is the existing one?
This looks great.
This is, this is the existing one?
This might be a brain.
It's a brainer. Now, what this one doesn't show is, if you look, you can't see it from here, but behind the, the cab, behind the door, the cat corners are rotten, so what happens is that the cat corners rot, then the door pulls me down, the doors don't close, that's only part of the deal. Here's more pictures. This is what they carry on the inside.
Lots of stuff.
Lots of stuff, and this goes out in every emergency, they, they use this every day.
How many miles on it, did you tell me?
There's not that many miles on it, it's probably sixty thousand.
Seventy seven thousand.
Oh, seventy seven thousand.
Your letter is.
Okay.
If I were to read them, I wouldn't have to ask a stupid question.
So, 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 everything they could possibly use is in this truck, and it's loaded on this truck, so that they can use it on a moment's notice, they can have everything that they need. And if you see with this picture, it's actually got a power tailgate, so they can get the heavy stuff off the truck without breaking their back.
Are you getting a tailgate?
I'm sorry?
Are you getting a tailgate?
Yes, yes, yeah. But here's, here's the picture that tells a story. This is the frame underneath.
Do they get it better as they go along?
They get, they get better.
He's building a story. He's layering it.
They, they get better as they go along. Now, put that picture aside for me, I got to give you another.
He's been busy today.
Apparently. I got some beauties over here. Oh, I got these.
I already got these.
Yeah, we got the, this looks like that bridge project.
I know it kind of does.
Is that a wooden floor? It's a wooden floor.
Is that common?
Yeah, it is, it is, and that's the thing, the wooden floor, if you look at this picture here, all, in places, all that weight is on that wooden floor and not on the cross members underneath, because there's holes in the cross member.
Why under the truck?
And if you.
The cross members are the frame.
It's the frame. If, if you look at this picture here, this one here.
That's the floor?
This is hard to see.
Ow!
But there's nothing here.
Ow!
It's completely rotten.
Is that like right underneath here?
Yeah.
That's the frame is rotten?
That's the frame is rotten.
Okay, so if I went under here, this is what I would be seeing.
And this truck is to the point where, not only this is rotten, but the cat corners are rotten, so it's not like we can take.
Show me where that is, Joe.
The cat corners?
Yeah.
The cat corners are down here, so what happens is, is when those rot, when you open the door, this, this drops, so when you, when you open the door, it's hard to close the door, so you have to like kind of pick the door up to shut it, because it, it doesn't meet right. And the only time you rebuild cat corners is if you have a classic car.
Which this is not.
Which is not, this is not, and that's big money to replace, you know, say.
Is this at all salvageable?
No.
Salvageable? Are you going to get anything for it?
We might get between five hundred and about a thousand dollars.
So what do you do, jump in?
We would send.
We do a surplus option.
So, yeah. But the fact that this is a front-line vehicle, used in emergencies, used every day, this is pretty important, and the other thing is, it needs, it needs six tires, and it's got to pass inspection in, I think, June.
Really?
And we do not want to put six tires on.
Need six tires?
And, and, put six tires on here at two hundred and fifty bucks a week.
Well, are those tires able to be used for the next truck, if you don't get this truck in time, the new truck?
He's not, he doesn't want to put them on.
I don't want, I don't want to put them on.
Want the money in.
No, I'm not.
I'm saying, can the new truck, well, no, that'd be stupid, they need a six tire. They, they actually come with tires, don't they, trucks?
We, we bear no cost.
I'm just, I'm just examining mine, stupid question.
We not only get warlocks, we get.
You can ask no tires, but it's really hard.
So, Joe, like, if they stuck their little head under there, like in an inspection, this is what they're going to say?
That's what I saw when I stuck my head under there to take the picture.
Well, these pictures will be helpful, since you're not going to be there.
This one's not good, do we have to show this one?
Yeah, it looks.
Yeah, it's not one.
It looks brand new.
That looks like the new one we're buying.
Unless you can get just a picture of the rotten door.
You need the rotters.
I can, I can do that.
Because this kind of makes it look like, yeah, how bad.
Brand new.
Well, it looks like you've taken good care of the body and the box.
Well, we do take good care of our equipment, but this piece, this, this truck, is it two thousand and one? It's sixteen years old.
That's important.
But just a better picture.
Okay, got it.
Kills your story a little bit. It's a brainer now.
Or we'll shred these.
All right, if you want, give these back to me.
Because this looks like a new.
Take that one back. I like the rusty face.
Tells a whole story. Is there anything wrong with this, or is this just showing us exactly? That just shows you what that is, and.
And the new truck.
And, and the new truck will have that, but.
It comes with it, Joe?
It comes with the, with the power lift.
Can you salvage the radio?
No, no, it, they're really not worth salvaging the radio.
If it came with the originals, then they're so, they're just so old that.
The, the radio is old.
The, the radio is old, the radio is, is ten years old also. The other thing on this truck here, the new truck, it will come, it will come with.
It's like wood?
Work lights on the side, so when the guys are at night, they can turn the work lights on, see what.
Do you have a picture of the new truck?
I do not.
Could you get that from the supplier?
I can try.
You know what you can do for me? Take these pictures, are these on your phone?
Yeah.
On my computer?
Yeah, email me them.
Okay.
Because then I can print them out myself, and I'll email them to the councilors as a suggestion. It's information, it's all right.
Why don't we just have a couple of copies?
That's true, too. The most important ones, all right?
All right, and I, I'll also get another, I'll get a picture of the rotten cat.
Right, and if you want, at the bottom of each picture, I don't know if you have Photoshop, you can just put rotten, Photoshop, you can text them, rotten corner, rotten, and circle it and everything, because that'll help, because you're not there.
Yeah, I'll take it.
All right, and we don't need a ton of pictures, maybe three or four.
Yeah.
Okay? And a picture of the new truck with the lights, this truck has lights, and it's, it's actually less expensive than, you said in your mail, your letter, that you could deal with a, a cheaper vehicle.
Right.
So that's good, because the new, a, a replacement would be seventy-five thousand, and you're getting this for fifty?
We originally looked at, the vehicle that we originally looked at was seventy-five thousand, but then we realized, we get this seventy-five thousand, it's.
You'll need a hundred for all the other stuff.
But we need a place to put it undercover, because if we get a bigger truck, we don't have a place to put it.
Oh, it's bigger? I thought.
No, no, the seventy-five thousand dollar one would have been.
Bigger.
Bigger, and we wouldn't have a place to put it.
So is this money replacing this exact truck, in the sense of its size and capability?
Pretty close, pretty close.
Okay, so I, for some reason, I thought we were getting.
But it, it will get into the existing building, which is what we want.
Ah, that's important. We're not going to build a new building.
The other one doesn't fit in the building.
This one does fit in the building.
Oh, it does?
It does, but if we, what-
The replacement one.
If we went with the seventy-five thousand dollar one, it wouldn't fit in the building. So we went with something, after talking to the guys, this is big enough, so we went with something that's very similar to this and will get in the building.
And it actually has a floor without holes in it?
It actually has a floor without holes.
Is it wooden floor?
Uh, it probably, it probably is not. It's probably, the new ones, it's probably, probably a metal, you know, a ten, ten gauge metal or something.
One of the things that happens, you're out there in the winter, it's all on the ground and you're sitting there, you know, with fixing stuff.
And like I said, this truck goes out every day, it's in the department.
And every day-
Has for sixteen years.
Yeah, every day and also in every emergency.
Well, I certainly feel like we need it. You've sold us. It's not quite the no-brainer that the other one was, but-
You know, I didn't expect it to be that important.
But fixing people's sewers is important.
That is.
I wouldn't put it forward if it wasn't for, if it wasn't important. This is out of enterprise.
I, I wasn't, you know, criticizing, geez.
Like these are, like, if you look, these are under, a lot of these, well, you know, even the meters, we keep them under, under capital requests, so these are our capital.
Enterprise retained earnings is a capital part of the enterprise budgets. Okay.
It's like the free cash of water and sewer, it's called enterprise. But I think these pictures, Joe, are really, you know, that, they show the under rust because it's amazing and like what Patty was saying, because you have the wood on the metal and the metal is all rusted and you can't really tell from inside, but looking underneath it.
That's right.
And if that thing gives way, you could lose all this equipment on top of it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, well, no problem with this. Anything else, guys?
No.
Okay, take a motion?
Motion for an appropriation in the amount of fifty-one thousand five hundred dollars to be appropriated from enterprise retained earnings to be appropriated to capital sewer. Twenty-seventeen Chevy van, unit thirty-five, to provide funds for the replacement of said unit thirty-five in sewer division.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
That deals with agenda items, but I wanted to inform the finance committee that something came up in CPA, which I think you guys need to know.
So, so Joe-
Thanks, Joe.
Okay.
Do you mind, just to kind of my office for one sec?
Karen, you stick around a second.